This is our intended pre-ordinary council meeting on Monday 27th of March 2023. Being advised thirty, we will commence for that. At first, I would just like to do a little bit of acknowledgement. The Deputy Mayor's City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Palau Pakta people as the traditional and original owners of Bluttra Weta and continuing custodians of this land on which we gather. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders past and present. Our attendance today, any apologies would be to the Councillor Sheen and Councillor Ennis. Other than that, we have all house thank you. Any declarations of interest? Well, I have five point one and three point four point one. Therefore, we'll move on to procedural. Therefore, because I am mayor, I will vocate in the chair for those two items on the agenda. And given the absence of our Deputy Mayor, council on course to section ten four of the local government's procedural regulations is to only follow their methods to be chairperson for these items.
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Martin and Councillor Murphy. Any discussion there, Councillor Martin?
We have procedure, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. I suppose we just want to say, Councillor Hollister, you've set the nomination to chair those two items.
Aye.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the table? Councillor Martin to five.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Thank you. And three point one is confirmation of minutes. My mover, please.
Second.
Councillor Murphy and Councillor Lani. Councillor Murphy.
You have seen it.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy.
Nothing to add, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further comment from the table? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Three point two, public question time. We have three point two point one. Responses to questions raised at prior meetings. If I could have a move of the recommendation there, please.
Oh, no.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Lani.
Yeah, it's in there in the attachments, the responses, Mr. Jennings. Hopefully, the grassroots will be easier to write in this week's minutes, this month's minutes.
Thank you, Councillor Lani. Councillor Murphy. Any further comment? Councillor Lani to five, please.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Three point two point two, questions on notice from the public. We have one moving on to... It's disappearing all over here, we can't get some. Three point two point three, questions with that notice from the public. Is there anybody from the gallery who'd like to speak to council? Mr. Jennings. Nice to see you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gorman. My name's Douglas Jennings. Twenty-three Watkinsont Street, Devon Court. Question is, when will the Trolly's Park be no more?
If you would don't mind, Mr. Jennings, this last one would like to answer that for me.
Through you, Mayor. We've been continuing to have discussions with both Woolies and Coles regarding their trolley collections. I guess the tricky part for both those operators is that depending on when customers decide themselves on DSA, we'll continue to work with them. It's certainly improved, but it hasn't been eliminated yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the gallery? There is none very much. Three point three is questions on notice from the councillors. We do have none, let's go, we will move on to three point four, notice of motion. Being this is three point four point one, I will vocate the chair and ask Councillor Hollister to come up. Take the chair with all the honour. If you use that, you might keep it now. I'll sit in your chair, Councillor Hollister, settle off.
Okay. The motion's approved access to Coles Beach, Back Beach, and... Somebody like to move the motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That was it. That's supposed to be second of the motion. Right.
Thank you, Councillor Hollister. I think the information is there for everybody to understand that this is just looking at the fact that we've had a lot of confirmation from people that are having access issues down at the Back Beach. It is time. Councillors certainly have done some interim measures, which is wonderful. There is a cement slab down there that has been put at the bottom of the stairs. However, access is still a problem. I'm going down there the other day, it was amazing. We had so many people coming to me and saying, "Thank you for respecting us and considering this." So therefore, I just thought it would be nice to put it to council on purpose because we're going into budget deliberation time and we seriously do need to look at some funding to improve the access from where the cement slab is over the boulders. Because when sand goes up over the top of that, that's fine. We have a small amount of time, probably three months, where there's enough sand for people to gain good access from the bottom of the stairs. However, when it's eroded away from the wash, over the nine months of winter and bad weather, it is really hard to get over those boulders. And we don't want to see anyone hurt themselves unnecessarily. So I've just asked council to consider putting this into budget deliberations for 2023. Twenty-four. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to support the motion to request further options. And I just want to note that this will be treated the same as the other fifty-eight budget submissions that also came in, budget request submissions that also came in through our surveys.
Further, please. Do you? Chair? So moved. I suppose I just wanted a little bit of clarification in respect to the notice of motion refers to Coles Beach and the speaker mentioned Back Beach. Just some clarification, are we talking Back Beach or Coles Beach?
It's in the heading, sorry.
But the motion actually says the council requests information for further option, access to the bottom of Dog Beach, deal on Coles Beach.
Yeah, the whole area is called Coles Beach, and that's the Back Beach section of Coles Beach. Do you think it's just called Back Beach on its own? I've always called it Coles Beach, sorry. Would you like me to modify that and change it?
Well, if I think for...
Clarity?
Clarity, we would need to ensure because the Dog Beach deal or Coles Beach, I think the general community would assume, considering that the sign is down there, actually calls it Back Beach.
Would you, Councillor Murphy, would you like me to change the word Coles to Back?
I would suggest that we do change it to Back Beach.
You must take a risk after to do that as well. Pardon me. Thank you. Is that all right with you, Chair? Thank you.
And also, the officer's comments there, it also refers to this Coles Beach dog area. But having said that, I noticed in the officer's comments that preliminary consideration has already been given to constructing a ramp and seawall to improve the transition potentially further. Is there any detail around that with respect to what that work has been done?
Through you, Acting Chair. The staff had done some preliminary work on what might be possible, so be involved extending a ramp down into the sand area and putting a rock seawall to try and stop some of the chingle build-up. However, it's very preliminary as I was going to do. The motion passes tonight. We would prove that after bringing back to the budget deliberations.
Thank you.
Please. Thank you, Acting Chair. Just a further point of clarification in regards to the motion. The bottom of Dog Beach, stairwell on Back Beach, yes, I was moving on that. Just to also push forward that Back Beach is off-leash Dog Beach, but Coles Beach is quite had dogs on leash. I just want to clarify that, it's a difference between the two. That's why I want to call Coles Beach, that's why I want to call Back Beach. Please.
I'd like to say that there's a lot of rocks at the bottom of the thing, bottom of the stairs. And I'm sure that's where the issues are. I'll have a look after ninety-two, you know, I've actually had a fall there. So, no doubt about that. It was a simple, good, 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 like, option. It's not like saying... You're all good. Councillor. Councillor Jamm, would you like to close it?
Thank you, Councillor Hollister. Consider it closed.
All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
So moving on along three point four point two, inspection of the pontoon eastern side of Leesu Gua.
So moved.
Thank you, Councillor Martin. And second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Councillor Hollister. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a background, in 2014, the ferry service had issues surrounding the ownership of the western pontoon and its gangway. It was also commonly known that the eastern pontoon was owned by Mersey Link, but the ownership of the western pontoon was claimed by both B and B Booty, the prior delivered in Mersey Link. The space around the pontoons were owned by Crown Land Services, leasing the eastern shore land to Mersey Link Phoenix Coaches, the western shore land to B and B Booty, the prior delivered. Trying to resolve the issue on 26th of June 2014, the lead man initiated and chaired a meeting with interested parties, requesting that the meeting be confidential. Furthermore, to assist council in facilitating a suitable outcome, the meeting corresponded with Mersey Link's directors, Grant and Jan Bingley, on the 27th of June 2014, regarding their decision to cease ferry services and seeking clarification on the view as to any future that the ferry service might have. Grant and Jan Bingley responded on the 8th of July 2014, outlining their concerns and opportunities, including council's consideration to commence negotiations with Crown Land Services to ensure Phoenix Coaches has free leasehold of the Crown Land for each pontoon, still without the issue of the ownership of the western pontoon cleared up. Subsequent meetings were initiated by the mayor, meeting independently with Mersey Link's directors, Jan and Grant Bingley, as ports taking line and being booking. Resulting from those meetings were an opportunity to put the ferry service back on its run, an opportunity with a dollar-filling figure attached to purchase the Crown Land lease for the western shore, as well as ownership of the western pontoon and its gangway, plus the willingness for council to take over the western land lease pontoon and its gangway. After such results were secured, order and grant would commence securing donations from supporting businesses, raising enough funds for a takeover. The resulting outcome was council securing the western shore lease, the western pontoon and gangway, and the eventual return of the service. Now again, council has been provided with an opportunity to return the ferry service to the community with the offer being gifted, the eastern shore land lease as well as the eastern pontoon and gangway. By securing the lease pontoon and gangway, council not only recognises and respects generous donations made by local businesses to secure the western side, it also ensures that the infrastructure, if in good condition, is secured and in place, ready for any interested parties who wish to continue this historic ferry service. The right, the first right of refusal in writing has been gained from Kinetic Simon Mannan, but with a note, but obviously this becomes time critical at some point. This motion is once again being put to inspect the condition of the eastern pontoon along with the opportunity accepted the offer by Kinetic. No matter which angle you look at, if council truly wants the ferry service to be returned, we need to inspect the pontoon sometime. Remembering, Kinetic has stated it will become time critical at some point, so why not now? I put the council to inspect the pontoon now so that it has all the information before it for the council's April meeting. The major points here are, if the pontoon is in good condition and viable, then council can in good faith move forward in discussing the business plan and maintain the opportunity to secure the pontoon and attract the ferry service. If the pontoon is to be found in average condition with needed work, such may well alter the structure of the business plan and obviously will need revisiting. However, if the pontoon is found to be in bad condition and not acceptable, then what's the point of wasting everybody's time considering a business plan that no one in any position can effect? With any of those possibilities to be considered, especially one where council rejects the pontoon and therefore wasting everybody's time on considering a plan that no one is in the decision to effect, we actually need to inspect the condition of the pontoon first. Delaying the process will underfoot of risk the opportunity to secure the pontoon, as it will become time critical at some point, and thus risk the future of the Mersey Ferry Service. Something I believe the community has made quite clear, they want to say. Without inspecting the condition of the pontoon, are we really dealing in good faith with catch? Or are we wasting everybody's time when the pontoon may not be acceptable because we don't know? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hollister.
Yes, this motion calls for an inspection of the pontoon to the city. What the condition is, which I agree with. I don't think we need to do much more than that at this stage.
What is a quarter, Mayor, being a mover, who's second to the motion?
Me.
Right, thank you. So I thought...
I think the pontoon needs to be inspected if the ferry doesn't eventuate in the future over another ferry. I can't see any reason why we can't open the two jetties up for public fishing. That'd be no different to the risk that we have of people using the ramp outside the Elamata at the moment and other areas around the port. And as far as the care of the ferry goes, if it can be brought back well and good, it is a service that this council needs to do, we service ferries for the public. No different to how we service sporting grounds and all our other sporting facilities and other community facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Yes, Mayor.
Councillor Murphy.
I would just like to move a procedural motion that this motion be deferred. And I'll base that motion purely upon the officer's comments that the ferry operator met with council in workshop earlier that month, earlier in the month. As a result, the workshop, further information is requested. Some information has now been provided and it will be assessed in a report of full costings and other implications provided to council for their consideration at the April meeting. I think we need to follow due process with respect to allowing that to happen as that was the rule of the council. Because the motion also states at point two, should the results of an inspection be acceptable, council then take up Kinetics after abditing the pontoon. Yeah. The problem I have there is that...
We just, we just need you to put up the motion, the procedural motion.
I'll put that up as a procedural motion, thanks, Mayor.
Do I have second?
I'll second and defer, but if it doesn't get up, I'll...
That's fine. That's fine, thank you. I just have to put that to a vote. So we have first and second up, so... All those in favour?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
So sharp hands. So we have Councillor Murphy, Councillor Lani, Councillor Moore, Councillor Jamm. And against, Councillor Wilczynski, Councillor Martin, and Councillor Hollister. It is moved as the procedural motion to tack from three point four point two. Thank you. Thank you. Item four, item forty matters. I'll now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act 1993 with consideration of agenda item four point one. Four point one being 131 to 133 Steel Street, Dapport. General route half consularised and signage. There was a representation. The general manager might speak on that, please.
Three of these, to clarify, see, in the agenda, there was one representation that's been provided. Since we need to print, that's been withdrawn. So there is now no representation, but council still needs to obviously determine the application like you would.
Thank you to you. So the recommendation is there, I could have a move, please.
Second.
Councillor Murphy, Councillor Lani, thank you, Councillor Murphy.
The tool detailed in the report, Mayor, content approach, we all give them in that particular precinct. So good luck to the...
Thank you, Councillor Lani.
Yep, there, I was hoping to be first on the trigger with this one, so I'm a bit disappointed I can only second it. But happy to support further health services in our, in our city. I think it fits in well with the mix, as Councillor Murphy alluded to, with the Skimming Lake right next door. And I think that any traffic issues are probably more to do with the ten dollar nuggets, twenty-four nuggets for ten dollars, than any other businesses on that particular corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lani, for that enlightening information. Any further comment, please? No, Councillor Murphy to five?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried, thank you. So I need to go through to item five, five point one. Again, Councillor Hollister, I'm going to call on services again, that's all right? And I'll this time read through. If you want, this can be here for people. Is that all right? Thank you.
This motion is for Public Government Association of Tasmania, the nomination form for the mayor to be Public General Manager of the committee. Somebody like to move, recommendation?
So moved. Second?
Second.
Councillor Murphy, would you like to speak to the motion?
I don't need to say too much. The mayor has quite clearly demonstrated her willingness to be on this committee, so I'll hardly endorse that recommendation.
Yeah, I'll just follow that with Councillor Murphy, it's all straightforward and it should be a good part of the committee.
Any further speaks? Most of them, all those in favour?
Aye.
Close.
Consider it closed.
All those in favour, if they say aye.
Aye.
As against? Carry.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Hollister. Five point two, budget consultation. The recommendation is there, if I could have a move, please.
So moved.
Councillor Moore, thank you.
Second.
Councillor Lani, thank you. Councillor Moore.
Now, I actually think this is a great strategy. I've read through all the budget consultation. I think there's fifty-eight people that actual, fifty-eight suggestions, maybe not fifty-eight actual people. And I think it's a great way to actually get community consultation for the budget.
Excellent. Councillor Lani.
Yeah, I agree how hardly with Councillor Moore. I think it's great that we've had this much input from the community and I'm looking forward to this first round of budget considerations.
Thank you. Any further comment? I would just reiterate as well, it's great to see so many people actually involved and engaged, which I think has improved as we're going along. It's getting better each year, I do believe. And it's wonderful to let people know that that's the whole point. We want them to have a say in what we do with their money. So it's very interesting to see the different interpretations or things that are needed from the community. So it's always a good read. So I'm very happy with that. Councillor Moore to close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Item five point three, technology one software enterprise licensing contract renewal. Our recommendation is there, can I have a move, please?
A move.
Councillor Hollister, thank you. Councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Hollister.
It's all in the report. Technology one I've found over the years. They've probably been here a little bit less than... They've probably been here a little bit less longer than me. But I think it goes to show how IT and technology is as good as anywhere, I'll say Australia. Other councils are looking to us for examples and it's been sort of having further delay.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, common sense approach. Devonport City Council has demonstrated its expertise in this particular technology and that's been showcased and we've been acknowledged and rewarded for it, so let's continue on.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilor Hollister to close please.
To do closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Five point four is CCTV strategy from 23 through to 27. The recommendation is there. If I could have a move please?
So moved.
Councilor Murphy, thank you. Uh, second up.
Second.
Councilor Hollister. Councilor Murphy, calling.
Um, this is purely around putting strategy in place for the community. So it's protected as well as protecting it. So I think will be a prime element sort of escalating in the community. I think this is only going to add as a deterrent moving forward. So we've learned a lot in that period of time. The CCTV cameras we've had for the last 20 years. So now it's about improving that.
Thank you. Councilor Hollister, comment?
Yes, I think the, this is another example of further development of our security for the public. So I fully recommend it.
Thank you. Any further comment on table? No, Councilor Murphy to close please.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? So carried. Five point five is the financial assistance scheme round two. Sorry.
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Councilor Martin. Let's just initiate the seconds. That's right. And second in place?
Second.
Councilor Hollister. Councilor Martin.
Thank you, ma'am. Some great community projects and activities for the benefit of Devonport residents and visitors. So it's wonderful for our community. Unfortunately, not all the criteria was met by some of the applicants not reaching the meeting criteria of awaiting. But I do encourage those committees to try again and probably contact the council officers prior to gain some advice before the successful applicants on report to the positive outcomes.
Thank you, Councilor Martin. Councilor Hollister.
Yes, I think actually the equivalent from part of your the organisations wasn't up to scratch. Some didn't do it by the required time. Some haven't done it at all, so they don't get considered. That's how it should be. Nothing further.
Thank you. Any further comments on the table?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Lani.
Yeah, just to point out that it was around that $150,000 that the council's contributing to these various clubs. And I think it's really great that it's spread around. It's not big single amounts going to one particular entity. So hopefully it does coofer a lot of small community groups. Thank you.
Good point. Councilor Murphy.
Thanks, ma'am. I think it just goes to show, one, how fiscally responsible Devonport City Council has been over a number of years. I think this, our council is probably one of the largest sort of community benefactors, if you like, in providing support to community enterprises, sporting clubs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, compared to other local governments within the state. So yeah, it's, it's good to see and we'll continue on.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilor Moore.
Yeah, I just want to agree and thank the committee for the work. I'm assuming that going through 22 submissions took quite a bit of time and thought. So yeah, I just want to thank the committee and I too am excited by the variety. They're not all sporting clubs, which is fantastic to see the variety in Devonport.
Thanks, Councilor Moore. Any further comments? Councilor Martin to file.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So. I'm, we're moving on to information sections. Six point one is workshops and briefing sessions. Helen's the last council meeting recommendation is there. If I could have a move please?
So moved.
Councilor Lani, thank you. Yeah, a second up.
So second.
Councilor, Councilor Lani.
It's on in the report there, ma'am. Seeing that there's not the tour of dolls and the deputy mayor was extremely excited about, was that not counted as a workshop? Should the mayor probably, if us two or so, there's no requirement to report that? It was, it was very informative and enjoyed that as well. I think these may should give the general.
Always a good one.
Anyways, there you go.
Very good.
Thank you. Councilor Moore.
There's nothing to add.
Any further comment? Councilor Murphy.
Uh, it was just very exciting, ma'am, I must say, to have Nathan along from Rand Arts. And again, a fantastic update and yet again, Devonport leading the way in that space.
Thank you. Good point. Councilor Hollister.
Sorry.
Was it sorry? Okay, thank you. Any further comment? Councilor Lani to close.
Consider it closed now.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Item six point two, Mayor's monthly report. Move please.
So moved.
Councilor Murphy. Now, second up?
Second.
Councilor Lani, thank you. Councilor Murphy.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Looks like you've been very busy.
Yes, I have.
Lot of breakfasts.
I will not deny that. A lot of breakfasts.
Very good.
Thank you. Councilor Moore.
Yes, ma'am, I agree with Councilor Murphy. I can't remember what day it was, but I think you had three on the one day and it meant that you couldn't do your swim as part of the local legends' duathlon. So I was happy to fill in for you in that particular event.
So noted, Councilor Lani. Thank you again for filling in. I would have been a force substitute compared to.
I won't let you forget about it either.
No, you won't. Thank you very much for that. Any further comment? Councilor Murphy to file this please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So moved. Six point three is the General Manager's Report. Do I have a move of the recommendation, please?
I move.
Councilor Hollister, second up?
Second.
Councilor Lani, thank you. Councilor Hollister.
It will be, I don't think I have any questions. Have any of the items that you listed? Nothing further, wait.
Thank you. Councilor Lani.
Yeah, I have a question where I'd like a little bit more information, please, ma'am, through you. Four point three, the mayor met with the, met with the mayor, the deputy, Prime Minister for Infrastructure, discussed a number of traffic concerns across the city, particularly those relating to Mersey Main Road. Be very interested to hear more about that.
Through you, ma'am. Thanks for the questions. So we had a very good meeting with the minister and he was open to hearing the concerns that we had with the Kersitcher and Mersey Main Road intersection and also the Sheffield Road and Mersey Road intersection. He had one of his senior people from within State Growth, Director of the Transport Network, so a person with responsibility for the state road network, with also intenments. Couple of outcomes, this modeling done on being done and being further refined, looking at, so State Growth doing this modeling to look at what predicted traffic growth will mean for those intersections. There's also a study being done in the Devonport to Cradle Mountain Corridor and both of those intersections have been referred into that study. So looking at the issues between here and here and Cradle. And there is, the government have $25 million set aside already to start working on that, that route. Must identify the priorities and we had staff members attending the initial workshop on that last week on the study. And the third thing that came out of the meeting was the, the State Growth Transport Director is actually coming up to Devonport next week to meet in person with the mayor himself and to drive around, have a look at some of these issues in person. So.
Hopefully during a good time.
Yeah, school, school day.
Yeah. So the service is not an overnight fix, but we felt that he understood the issues and was willing to work with council on solutions.
Thanks for that information. Cheers.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Question?
Yes, Councilor Hollister.
The regional planning framework, some reviews of the Cradle Coast Regional Land Strategy. Any of that likely to affect us?
Yes, through you, ma'am, it will. So the last regional strategy was done back in 2009, I think it was, 2008. There's certainly been some incidents and some issues since that point where that's been raised in the Task Planning Commission. Not supportive of some of the decisions council had made. So getting that regional strategy aligned with the direction that council want to go in the city is important. So we're an active participant in that review and making sure that our Devonport Presidential Road Strategy aligns with the regional strategies. It would be, yeah, quite a long process to review all our strategies. There is similar project going on in the north and also the south, so.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilor Hollister, you may close the debate.
Consider it closed.
You have your argument, that's all right.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So moved. Thank you. Uh, six point four will be the monthly operational report for February 2023. A little bit of reading there. Recommendation is there. If I could have a move please?
So moved.
Councilor Murphy, thank you. And a second up?
Consider.
Councilor Moore, thank you. Councilor Murphy.
That's all in the report, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilor Martin.
Uh, thank you. Good to see there's an increase in planning applications up by 61%. And that the value of building works increased by 51% to $5 million. It's also good to see that there's been a big increase in dog, uh, sorry. I also see there's been a big increase in dogs being at large, basically off leash. Presumably the instances have been investigated. Just take this opportunity to remind residents to ensure that dogs are secure and on leash outside the off-leash areas. People are still afraid of dogs, some people, and dogs are also afraid of dogs. Thought the regional galleries, the Dadaa exhibition, celebrating the Dadaa Festival, 1995, 1999 was a blast from the past, knowing the photographs along the Dadaa plains. I thought that was a great exhibition. Also noted the usage of the modestory car park was 28% greater than, than budget. But all in all, the overall budget is still a little behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Just a very specific.
Councilor Lani.
Yes, a very specific question in regards to environmental health inspections. With the numbers on the bar graph, is that total inspections across the different types of permits?
Through you, using this one, thank you.
Yeah, through the mayor. You might need to be a little bit more specific with your question, Councilor Lani.
So orange says health permit registrations, is that new registrations or is that inspections of those registrations?
No, that is the, the new registrations.
Okay. Is the number of inspections on that bar?
No.
Okay. She says, number of inspections.
Yep.
Question?
Thank you. Councilor Hollister.
The man about at the flat seems to be a bit of a dog's breakfast on the edges. We're looking at doing something to it.
Through you, ma'am. It will be a project, look forward to the project deliberations, council.
True.
I've almost answered that. Thank you. Any further questions, comments? I just feel to say, thank goodness we've got toilet block finished at the Portcreek. That's been an ongoing thing for just a long time. Thank you to everyone that has been patient about that. We handed it to our budget deliberations a long time ago. It was deferred for very good reasons at the time. And now for it to be finalized and to see, you use down there is such, such a great thing. So it's really good to see that we're now not toilet block there for the right reasons. And that will fix a lot of problems that we were having there. So really would want to just make sure everyone's aware that that is there now. Thank you. And I will ask Councilor Martin, your comments?
Just could have proposed, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Item seven is section 23. There was none and we are moving into the closed session. So I will thank our two in the public gallery for attending. Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody that's watching from the bar.
Second.
Thank you. Councilor Martin has moved and seconded from Councilor Murphy. Further comment? Councilor Martin to file?
Close.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.